If everyone would stand for the invocation by the Reverend Rob Robertson of Charity United Methodist Church. And we thank you for coming down today, sir. And remember your father very well as a great doctor in Virginia Beach, if I remember right.
Yes.
If you remain standing after the invocation for the pleasure of allegiance.
It's great to be here and to represent the charity church family. So let us pray. Holy God, we lift our hearts and souls and minds to you this evening. We humbly ask for your blessings upon the proceedings of city council tonight. Lord, guide and strengthen these men and women who represent the citizens of the city. Give them ears and hearts to hear one another and all who come to speak before them tonight. Grant them wisdom to be stewards of all that this city has to offer and to act in the very best interest of all of our citizens and visitors. Give them insight to lead with integrity that their decisions may reflect what is right and good. Lord, grant them the humility to always seek your will in all that they do. Holy God, we thank you for all who serve as employees of this city, members of boards and commissions and councils. Bless, protect, and lead them all for the benefit of all who live and work and play here. Grant that the citizens of our city may continue to grow and serve us to one another. That this city may serve as a beacon of light and hope for all the world. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again for coming up. Do you have a motion for approval of the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, Mrs. Hammond, she had to leave for an appointment, being absent. You have approved the closed session.
Do you have a motion for approval of the amendments of the informal and formal sessions of July 14, 2015?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
Mrs. Kane, may I have your vote? By a vote of ten to zero, you have...
And folks, now it's my honor if I could ask Senator McWhorters and his wife Cindy to come forward, please, to the microphone.
I'm glad Cindy's here because, as we all know when we're in politics, it isn't just us. Our spouses are greatly involved and y'all have just served our city and our Commonwealth so well. And it is my pleasure to read this resolution, if I may. We have Senator Jeff L. McWhorters, is a Kentucky native, who worked his way through the University of Kentucky and is a very successful entrepreneur. Whereas he is president and CEO of Value Options and one of the founders of AmeriGroup, a company which grew from a kitchen table to eventually become a Fortune 300 corporation. Whereas AmeriGroup's headquarters is in Virginia Beach and employed over 3,500 before it was absorbed by Anthem Inc. And whereas Senator McWhorters has been a proud resident of Virginia Beach for many years. And whereas Jeff McWhorters was elected to the Senate of Virginia six years ago to fill out the term of then-Senator Ken Stahle. Whereas he was reelected for a full four-year term in 2011. Whereas Senator McWhorters has gone on to serve with distinction in the oldest continuous legislative body in the new world. And whereas he has been a defender of business, the environment, taxpayers, and the city of Virginia Beach. And whereas Jeff McWhorters is a talented percussionist and singer with the band Gava Jam, which is the most important thing. He's a rock star. And whereas Jeff McWhorters has served as vice director of the College of William &amp; Mary as one of the founders of Trinity Church in Virginia Beach. And whereas he worked both in front and behind the scenes to protect and advance the needs of the city of Virginia Beach, Virginia. And whereas Senator McWhorters has decided not to run for reelection in the 2015 general election. Now therefore be it resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council congratulates Senator Jeffrey McWhorters for his entrepreneurship, his citizenship, and his leadership. The Virginia Beach City Council is thankful for his counsel and work on the city's behalf and as Virginians. And we refer to on this fourth day of August, 2015, as Senator Jeffrey McWhorters' day. And this is given under the hands of all the council members. And Jeff, if I could present this to you. And Senator, knowing that you still have a little political life in you, do you want us to talk?
I just wanted to say, you know, I'm not really a politician. I'm a business guy. And coming into this as a rookie, many of you gave me good advice and counsel along the way and help along the way. So I want to thank you for that. I want to tell you that as far as I'm concerned, none of your jobs are in danger because you have the hardest jobs in America. And I really appreciate it. And it's, you know, an honor for me to be able to work around you. But it's also very enlightening for me to see just how hard your job is when I see you from a part-time legislative position like I have to almost a full-time with your other full-time jobs and families that you have. So I think the city and the Commonwealth owes you, and I appreciate this from me. But I think we all owe you a great deal of thanks and support for the work you do. It's not easy. It's... There's never much appreciation and people always remember the bad stuff and not the good stuff. Mr. City Manager, it's been a wonderful pleasure working with you, sir. And I look forward to seeing what you'll be doing in the future. I don't know what's your vocal capability. I know you love the Gava Jam band and you got that a lot. We can talk. We can talk. I hope to see you guys at the American Music Festival, Wine, Women, and Fishing, one of these places.
He's promoting.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we have some representatives from something that's really spectacular in our city. And that's the Circus du Soleil of CUSA down at the... Across from the convention center. And I believe we have Sean Brickell and Ron Kellum, if they're here. And it's my pleasure to read this resolution. And first of all, how are things going down there?
Great. We hear the sound of freedom every night.
I picked up on that as we were there. But that is good stuff. Indeed. Well, it is my pleasure to read this resolution, if I may. And some of these words I might not do well with, but I'll do the best that I can. Whereas CUSA is premier Circus du Soleil production in Virginia Beach. The show has been viewed around the world by more than 4 million people in almost 50 cities in 12 countries and on three continents. CUSA tells the story of innocent, a melancholy loner in search of his place in the world. It combines two circus traditions, acrobatic performance and the art of clowning, highlighting the physical demands of human performance and all its splendor and fragility, emphasizing bold slapstick humor. Whereas the cast and crew of more than 120 come from 18 different countries. During their stay, they are occupying more than 4,000 hotel rooms in Virginia Beach. Whereas Circus du Soleil is truly one of the world's most attended and loved entertainment programs. Truly an incredible show under the big top. More than 155 million fans have enjoyed the Circus du Soleil performance since 1984, including 15 million in 2014. Whereas Circus du Soleil has not received any grants from the public nor private sector since 1992. Whereas CUSA's yellow and blue big top seats, almost 2,500 spectators in a climate-controlled environment that is 56 feet tall and 164 feet in diameter, approximately 65 very large trucks needed to bring everything to Virginia Beach. The technology and the mechanical maneuvers are high-tech and breathtaking. Whereas during CUSA's engagement in Virginia Beach, jobs have been created with more than 120 local people employed to help with ticketing, seating, janitorial services, and administration. While in Virginia Beach, CUSA relies on local suppliers for many essentials such as food, biodiesel fuel, machinery, food and beverage supplies for patrons, banking services, delivery services, recycling, and waste management, thereby injecting a significant amount of money into our local economy. Whereas with the month of performance schedule, CUSA is the longest-running tenant in the history of the Virginia Beach Convention Center. Now therefore be it resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council paused in its deliberations to recognize Circus du Soleil for its creative thinking and foresight to see a dream become reality in presenting this unique and professional entertainment venue in Virginia Beach where history meets the sea and continues to establish legacies for its almost one-half million citizens, thus making it the best city in the world. Be it further resolved that Saturday, August 8, 2015, be known and celebrated as Circus du Soleil CUSA Day. And this is signed by all the members of the council. And I'd love to present this to you. If you all have not been to this, this is just spectacular. And Sean, Ken, would you like to say anything?
Sure. I'm Ron Kellum, the artistic director for Circus du Soleil. And I just want to tell you on behalf of my incredible artist and our company, it has just been a privilege to be here. The hospitality here has been remarkable, from your travel and tourism board to patrons, to the restaurants, to going out and getting haircuts. Just the local citizens have been just fantastic to us. We're only making three stops in the United States before we head off to South America and then over to Australia. So being here on one of our stops, coming from Europe, has just been wonderful for us. So thank you all for being so incredibly supportive. And most important, thank you for supporting the arts because it is such an important institution that I think really inspires and transforms. So we appreciate the council and mayor systems for having us.
It's our pleasure. Sean, did you want to say anything?
Well, if it's all possible and if the pleasure could be, at least get a picture of some of our characters with the council or the social media.
Come right around and turn... Come get in front of us. Look around that way. There you go.
Will, do we want to get closer?
Why don't we come down there? Okay?
I'll text you.
Here you go. She'll text me yours.
I remember shaking you.
I don't remember you.
I don't.
Thank you. We're gonna have to really, really crowd.
All right. All of my folks?
Everyone, one, two, three. Everyone say CUSA.
CUSA! Now this way, please. CUSA? CUSA! All right, thank you all. Glad you're all here.
Thank you.
Did we have speakers on? Item number one, planning? Okay. We did. Okay, but let me go ahead. Open a public hearing for excess property on 1081 Norfolk Avenue, M&amp;K Investments?
No speakers here on here.
Princess Anne in Lanstown Center, VBDA?
No speakers.
All right. Mr. Vice Mayor, if you'd go forward with the consent agenda, please.
I'd ask Mr. Wood to do the add-on if he were to do it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that we add a resolution directing the award of a contract for a city manager search firm.
I'll second.
Can you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten for nine to one, you have approved the resolution for the search for the city manager. And Mr. Moth is voting nay, and Mrs. Hammond, Ross Hammond is absent.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval under the consent agenda, first under ordinances, item J. 1, which ordinances to amend the city code A, section 7-66, for a designation of city highways for golf cart operation in the Lagalgar and Chub Lake neighborhoods. And B, section 10-1, to only change the name of the Bonny-Voughton precinct from Holland Road Baptist Church to Discovery Church. J. 2, which is a resolution, re-issuance through the Development Authority of up to $85 billion in series 2015 residential care facility mortgage bonds and refunding bonds issued in 2005, 2009, 2011 for Westminster Canterbury of Hampton Roads, Inc. J. 3, ordinance to declare excess property and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents to convey 1081 Norfolk Avenue to M&amp;K Investments, 1 LLC. J. 4, ordinances to accept and appropriate grant funds, A, $93,750 from the Department of Criminal Justice, including matching funds, ray the juvenile sex offender program, and continue one full-time employee. B, $94,440.50 in state forth-life funds, ray cardiac monitor upgrades for EMS and fire. And item J. 5, which is the add-on, is for approval of a resolution directing the award of a contract for a city manager search firm.
Open a public hearing for planning?
Under planning for consent, item K. 2, which is application of WAVE Church for modification of conditional use permits, ray installation of modular classroom units at A, 2665 Seaboard Road in the Prince Anne District, and B, 1,000 North Great Neck Road in the Lynn Haven District. Item 3, application of Gary Collier and Doris Geneva LLC for conditional use permit, ray auto repair at 416 Davis Street in the Kempfville District. Item 4, outdoor resorts of Virginia Beach Condominium Association, Inc. for a conditional use permit to comply with the city's floodplain ordinance, ray recreational resort community at 3665 South Sam Piper Road in the Princess Anne District as modified by Mrs. Henley. Item 5, which is the Uritex Service Center, LLC, and the Bank of Hampton Roads for a conditional use permit, ray vehicle repair at 207 209 Pennsylvania Avenue in the Bayside District. And item 6 is amend section 901 of the city zoning ordinance to add group homes as a conditional use in the B4 mixed-use district. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
I'd like to make an amendment, if I could, friendly. I plan to vote no on J. 5 and also vote no on K. 6. And I'll explain my reasons after the vote.
Certainly. Any other... Call for the question, please.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved a consent agenda pending Mr. Moth's statements.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I voted no on the proposal to select a firm to do the executive recruitment, not because I necessarily disagree with the selection by my peers, but the actual proposals were not made available to review until today. And as a matter of habit, I don't like to vote on something I have not personally read, even though I trust, the old saying goes, "Trust but verify for yourself." So I'm voting no for that reason, but not with prejudice from other contemporary, my peers' vote. And on item 6, while it makes the group home as a conditional use, I would prefer that it be a matter of right so that people can move on with their property rights without being forced into conditions they might otherwise not want to take. So that was my reasoning.
Thank you very much. We now get a under-planning, item number one. Paul S. Brown Family LLC for changes zoning from R20 Residential District to I-1 Industrial District regarding access roadway to a bulk storage. B, BT Holdings 3 LLC for conditional changes zoning from Ag. 1 and Ag. 2 Agriculture's conditional I-1 Industrial and conditional use permit regarding a bulk storage yard at Harper's Road and Dam Neck Road. If applicant would come forward, Mr. Miller, we welcome you. You'll have up to 10 minutes to make your presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Bob Miller. I'm a professional engineer locally, and I'm standing in for Eddie this evening. I understand the item was on the consent agenda as proposed. And the one concern that I was not able to touch base with you today about the one-year review was something that was acceptable to us. So I'd be happy to answer questions after we hear from the opposition, if that'd be okay.
If we'll call the speakers, please.
Next speaker is Michael Gerard. And the following speaker is Tracy Little. They have three minutes, Your Honor.
Yes, sir. You'll have three minutes. We welcome you tonight, sir.
Good evening. My name's Mike Jared. I'm a HOA president for Prince George State's, 29-year resident of Virginia Beach. I live at 1800 Chelsea Green Drive. Thank you for your time, council members. Thank you for your time, mayor. Thank you for the council members, Wilson and Henley, that came out to our meeting in 2014 when we started this process. We wear our stop signs to unify us against further development on London Bridge Road. We have a bunch of people, if they could all raise their hands for us.
We welcome you.
We have seen indefinite withdrawals, deferrals, and lots of zoning violations. We have been looking at a wall of dirt for the past year and four months. We have filled your email boxes with illegal activities and paving roads on Easter Sunday. We have a petition that I brought with me with 600 signatures. It's hiding under here. We have 84 homes in our neighborhood, so 600 signatures was hard to come by. If anybody wants to see that later, I can provide it.
You can pass that to the clerk, please.
Our mission has been to effectively influence you all to preserve and protect the family-friendly atmosphere of our community and from further industrial encroachment and activities that may jeopardize the health and safety and welfare of our residents. The zoning will interfere with our lawful rights as citizens to enjoy the quiet comfort and enjoyment of our residential homes. Our argument is simple. Industrial next to residential is not compatible. The why: quality of life issues. We have numerous existing complaints with the existing bulk storage yard. Noise will be an issue. We have a binder here that was put together by one of the neighbors that's here tonight that has parties going on with biker gangs. It's got people living in their storage sheds, things that this new development may have for us as well. Would you like that as well?
Yes.
Other quality of life issues: operating hours. They do not benefit or even consider the neighborhood. Crime and safety of our neighborhood is a major concern as well. Registered sex offenders and gunshots are already issues we are working on. I found the crime awareness on virginbeach.gov. It's for self-storage facilities, if anybody's ever seen this document before. I highlighted it in the back, but I found that it talks about... I thought I got 10 minutes because I was the HOA.
You're representing...
Okay, so I'm good.
You do get 10 minutes.
They beat me off last time. It made me nervous.
You've got six and a half more.
Heard six and a half. I found this on the Virginia Beach Gov. Basically, under storage, of the following items may be a cause for concern. It's talking about things that are crime and terrorism. The bullet point says large delivery vehicles, vans, cargo containers, trailers, or related equipment could be an issue. And that's exactly what this application is trying to store, next to a neighborhood. We've learned a lot about the comp plan to special economic growth areas. Some key points are: every effort should be made where feasible, consolidate parcels to achieve a more uniform development pattern. So what are we doing with the other 80 acres that are right next to this? Build an attractive thoroughfare to serve this area, which we are going to build chain link fences, if I'm not mistaken. This is viewed as a special area with significant economic value and growth potential. So I don't think that means parking lots. High-quality employment, corporate parks, and light industrial uses are recommended for the undeveloped area. Maybe one employee will be working for those 27 acres. The 2009 comp plan, it is used to guide growth, protect neighborhoods, improve our economy, ultimately advance the overall quality of our life of our residents. That was pretty interesting because this is all what we're talking about. We are a high-end neighborhood, and we deserve high-end economic development. In closing, we know industrial zone facilities adjacent to a residential neighborhood cause quality of life issues for residents. We also know that the industrial zone facilities adjacent to a neighborhood will generate increased complaints to the city. You can probably ask zoning how many times we've called. Enforcement of current zoning laws and the proposed restrictions is difficult, to almost impossible, to actually govern. Based on factual info available, we believe rezoning aged industrial is not supported by the master plan. It is incompatible with residential neighborhoods and will cause additional quality of life issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Tracy Little.
We welcome you tonight.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
My name is Tracy Little. I live over in Prince George State's. Good evening. I live in the rear portion adjacent to the area where they're going to rezone. I'm opposed to the proposed rezoning of the land from the agricultural to any type of industry. If this rezoning is approved, there's no way to know how this will impact our quality of life as well as our property values some years down the line. My guess is that in the long range, in the long run, it will have a negative impact on our neighborhood in a variety of ways, as is evidenced by the current issues we now experience with the storage facility that is there. By approving this now, you will be sealing our fate, and the precedent to rezone the entire area to industrial will be set. If this must be rezoned, please reconsider whether alternative types of zoning would be better suited in such close proximity to our residential neighborhood. And my final point is, if this was going to be built in your backyard or adjacent to your neighborhood, what would you do? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Robert?
Is this the same group that... Because I know when I came out there and the people that have... There was a lot of issues with the... That was already there. Is this owned by the same people?
There's been... That has been a point of contention, whether or not the same... The lawyer representing them said, "No, it isn't the same person." But we feel that in time, it will be turned over to the owner of the property now and will be managed by the same gentleman who runs the property, the storage facility that is there now, Barbers. So we believe that that's going to eventually happen.
Jane?
What gives you that inclination that that might actually be what happens? What makes you think that?
It gives us the idea, and probably our HOA president would be better speaking about that.
Why don't we ask the applicant to get... Ask him who the owner is in a few moments, okay?
Okay. Can I finish that sentence, though?
Sure.
The original... This was proposed back in March 2013, or March... Was it March 2014? And at that time, it was proposed as being part of Barbers' story, proposed expansion of his facility. And then it was put off for a year. And then when it came back, it was proposed as being facility run by Creach. So that's why we assume that eventually it will be turned over. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
And with those comments, Mrs. Creach is here, who is the owner of the property. About a year and a half ago, in somewhere in March of 2014, there was a discussion with that owner, Oscar Bar, because he wanted to restore some vehicles back there. But it is her property, has been her family's property for 70 years. There's no intention to sell it to someone else. They're going to run this. So that's a particular question. The other thing is, is we did meet with the neighbors and met with them a couple of times and have gotten their input and have adjusted our plan several times. So what you're looking at is an adjustment to the plan at their request. Included in that is an eight-foot-high privacy fence. We also are putting in a berm that is 15 feet high. And we're putting in landscaping throughout a large area, which is... That whole area. This whole area right here. And it doesn't look like it's very big, but it's almost two acres. And we're going to reseed that. And then this existing tree line will stay there. Our eight-foot-high area will be right here. That's also... Excuse me. That's a privacy fence. There is chain link fence on the rest of the property to make sure. The lights are dark skies, so they will go down and not shine into the neighborhood. And our access, by the way, is a 24-foot road. And that is on the Brown property, which is this piece of property, and then Mrs. Creach's property, which is here. In addition to that, obviously, we'll make sure that the vehicles that are on there are not just left there. They will be stored there. There'll be operational vehicles. People... They will not have people in them. We've already proffered this. There's no hookups for water, sewer, electric. There is no construction equipment allowed. There's no generators. We will not have any parties. I just... I'll make Mrs... If Mrs. Creach could come up and tell you that, but I'll tell you, we'll have no parties. And we do understand that this is to be a controlled place. We have a keypad entry. We have a keypad entry, which would be right in that area right there, and that will allow for only the people that are allowed to be in there. And then obviously, we will have our responsibility to make sure everything is secure and that nothing is left in there. Bulk storage, other bulk storage which might be in there will not allow for anybody to be able to be housed there, so we'll make sure that that doesn't happen. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions? Mr. Henley?
Could you, because I think the really critical part, other than the ownership property, which is extremely critical, is the buffering that's going to be, because I think the really important thing is that...
Improvement.
There's not any, you know, it's not at the very edge of somebody's backyard. Now, I understand that there's going to be that triangular portion, that's, you said, about two acres...
Yes, ma'am.
...is going to be allowed to reforest.
Yes, ma'am.
So it...
And we'll actually put the seedlings in.
You will plant the seedlings. It's not going to be a happenstance. You're going to plant seedlings. And so that will be a two-acre forested area...
Yes, ma'am.
...between the residential and this property.
Yes, ma'am. That's about three hundred feet from the house to, the nearest house to, where we would be. This is the berm that's fifteen feet tall, and then we also have the privacy fence, like I said, that's eight feet.
Fifteen-foot-tall berm on the other side of the forested area from the homes, and an eight-foot privacy fence.
Yes, ma'am.
And you agree to accept the condition that after one year, it will be reviewed to make certain that it's satisfactory and is being done as has been portrayed before it's been renewed by the, could be administratively renewed if it's found to be in compliance.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other question? And this is going to be owned and continue to be owned and managed by...
The Creach family.
...by the Creach family. And it's not going to be, I mean, I was looking in the disclosure, and I don't see that it's going to be, that Mr. Barber is in any way affiliated.
That is fair.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, excuse me, Ms. Ross.
I have just a question for Ms. Lively, if I could. This is, I'm just, one of the questions was raised about precedent setting. Given the way that site is developed, that wouldn't preclude us from the other property further down being rezoned for residential or some other use other than light industrial?
Well, this is in the high-noise zone, greater than seventy-five dB. A lot of the property has Navy easements on it that do not allow residential, so...
Is that all that parcel that does the south, all of its ACUs?
Yes, sir.
All of it? Okay, thank you. That's in the map, it's all of it. Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Henley?
Well, this is...
You can see the line, the ACUs line, but...
Well, this is the thing that is so, another thing that's very critical about this area is that it is in the high-noise zone. I mean, greater than seventy-five is as high as it gets, and is subject to these Navy restrictions, in some cases easements, so that there can't be anything else there. But this is, this is true all along London Bridge Road to a very great extent. It's in various levels of high noise, which means that the Navy is highly objectioned to residential. And according to our agreements that we have with the Navy, we will not allow residential in those areas. Could Karen, maybe, are you the best person to speak to that? What is this MOU that we have with the Navy as far as, when an application comes in for a rezoning, that, what is the process?
Well, if it is in an area with ACUs issues and the proposed use is not compatible, and actually, in our zoning ordinance, we have adopted the charts that show what uses are compatible in which districts. And if it's not compatible, then they go before this joint committee of city staff and the Navy, and we just make a recommendation, that committee, on that committee, we make a recommendation as to whether or not it's appropriate. The code does outline specific cases where you may want to vary from that. But in general, if it's not compatible, it's not appropriate to rezone it to that use.
And this is the unfortunate thing: residential or anything of a residential nature is viewed as incompatible with the high-noise zones.
Correct.
And so therefore, that is the overriding factor, not a matter of precedence per individual zonings. And I think it's going to be an issue, well, it is an issue, all along London Bridge Road in the currently undeveloped areas that we're going to be continually dealing with. And so finding compatible or ways to make things other than residential compatible in these areas that had previously developed as residential is our challenge. Thank you, Mr. Miller. I think. And so I think that's the, that's the reason why we have to look at the issues such as buffering, for whatever issue it is, and to try to make certain that we're putting as low a level of usage in an area that is near a residential area as possible. Having this two-acre reforested area is pretty big, and a fifteen-foot berm. And I fully appreciate the problems that are being experienced over there with the already existing storage facility. And I know that our zoning enforcement people are constantly trying to resolve some of the issues that occur there. But this access road is on the other side of that facility, and with this buffering that's been done, I think that's about all we can ask for of this property owner, to try to ameliorate the, any impact that they might have on the residential area. I wish that, you know, we were not as constrained as we are in the potential uses that we can make in that area, but given the situation with the Navy's concerns, I think, you know, we have to make these tough calls, and that's why I do want us to have this one-year review to make certain that this is developing as we are looking at it tonight, and that it is as unobtrusive as we can possibly make it. So with those conditions, I'll move approval.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion.
I'd like, if Mr. Spore could follow up with the city real estate assessment, since this is setting aside a substantial acreage on the property for a buffer, for the public benefit entry, which have all part of our candidacy program, I'd be interested to learning, when the property is assessed as a whole parcel, because that's what it is, how can we make adjustments to reflect the lack of, that's not a productive part of that parcel, and how's that taken into consideration when evaluating the property for assessment to reflect the public good being provided? I'd just like to have a follow-up on that, but I think it's...
Rosemary?
I want to say, Barbara and I did go out to Prince George, and beautiful neighborhood and wonderful people, and your neighbor, was it Mr. Barber? He's not been a good neighbor, and y'all have definitely had to deal with a lot of things that most people shouldn't have, I mean, no one should have to deal with. But I do agree with Barbara, with this huge amount of buffering and separating it with the berms and all, that it will not be the same problems as what you're having right now.
Thank you, Shannon.
I'm going to respectfully have to go against the motion and support the homeowners tonight, and my reason being is, we have eighty-some property owners here that we need to look at their, at their rights as well, and I understand the buffering and the care that's gone into the proposal for the property owner, Mrs. Creach, that's here. However, I do have to agree with them in the quality of life that we tout as a city. I think that's very important, and I think the safety and the livability of your homes is very important. And looking at the pictures that was sent to us a little earlier, I would not want those as my neighbors, and I appreciate you for sending those. Thank you, Mike, for doing that. And I am going to respectfully have to decline the, to support the motion.
Any more comments? I'll call for the question, please.
By a vote of nine to one, with Mrs. Ross Hammond abstinent, you have approved the application with the change of conditions.
Thank you. Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? We're going to adjourn, but we got open mic, and do we have any speakers for open mic?
Yes, sir, you have two.
Okay, let me know when we're ready for them, please. Are we ready?
Yes, sir, we are now.
Call the speakers, please.